I'd like to call the meeting of the Naragansett Regional School Committee to order, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome, everybody. It's exciting to see people out in the audience tonight. And thank you for bearing with us a couple of minutes before we opened our meeting. Just for note that the meeting is being recorded by Naragansett, and it's done in conjunction with Templeton Community TV. And those videos to get provided to Templeton and Phillipston Cable Access TV. We have a whole slew of minutes to approve. I believe they've been provided in advance, but if you didn't get a chance to look at them, we'll give everyone a couple of minutes, but I will bring the first one up. I would entertain a motion when someone is ready to approve the minutes of Monday, February 11th of 2019. I have a first. Do I have a second? And I do have a second. Do I have any comments or questions, or anyone need a couple more minutes just to look through? Thank you. Good. Okay. Here are no comments or questions. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stand. Passes unanimously. The second set of minutes, I would take a motion, would entertain a motion, to approve the minutes of February 13th, 2019 as written. I have a first. Do I have a second? No, not two seconds. Any comments or questions? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Stand. Passes unanimously. The next minutes are for, I'm sorry, that was for the Finance Committee meeting. My apologies that I wasn't clear on that one. This is for the Regular School Committee meeting that we had on February 13th, 2019. So when someone's ready, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the Regular School Committee meeting of February 13th, 2019. I have a first. Do I have a second? I have a second. Any comments or questions? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stand. Motion passes unanimously. The next minutes I have are from February 27th, 2019, which was our preliminary budget hearing. When someone is ready, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written. I have a first. Do I have a second? I have a second. Any comments or questions? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stand. Passes unanimously. And the last set of minutes we have was for our school committee budget hearing, and we did have a couple of action items, so we did have an actual meeting from March 6th, 2019. When someone is ready, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? And a second. Any comments or questions? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stand. Passes unanimously. Thank you. A lot of minutes. Okay. We are going to get, oh, we have bills and payroll. I know they're big. Do you want us to come back to it?
That's up to you.
Okay. We'll take, because there's still a couple of signatures on here, but I would entertain a motion to recommend to accept the bills and payroll warrants as presented. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
And a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stand. Motion passes unanimously. We do have several appearances tonight. We'll start with our student representative, so I'm not sure who's presented tonight. We have CJ coming down. So thank you for coming, and let us know what's going on.
All right. During February vacation, as you know, 15 students and two teachers made the trip to the Dominican Republic where they completed service learning projects. You'll hear more from them and their group later. The middle and high school bands performed a very successful combined band concert. There was a great turnout. The band directors and members want to thank everyone for their support. There's also a free color guard clinic with the UMass captains on April 27th. The high school band also participated in the Holyoke St. Patrick's Day Parade. While at the parade, the color guard was recognized as the best high school marching band flag corps. The International Club hosted a fun and educational international week where students and teachers were able to purchase typical breakfast items from other countries each day for $1, as well as participate in activities after school each day relating to their other countries. Students enjoyed a performance of Brazilian music and dance, and club members also took a field trip to the UMass Amherds Fine Arts Center. The winter track team had a successful season ending with state qualifiers. Brian and Callie qualified for the 1,000-meter run, and Hunter and Kylie qualified for the two-mile run. The boys varsity basketball team won the Clark Tournament for the first time since 1987, and we also made it to the final round of the Western Division MIAA tournament. Cheerleaders also placed third in their regional competition, sixth in the state. The Math Honors Society hosted various activities on March 14th, Pi Day. All students who wore Pi Day shirts were treated to pies that were donated by Table Talk's pies. Students also guessed how many pennies were in a pie plate and completed math challenge problems. Teachers also got into the spirit by wearing Pi Day shirts. The senior class sponsored their second annual dodgeball tournament. The winning team was made up of the boys' basketball team. Everyone had a great time. Annie Musical was, Annie Musical will be on the Safga Auditorium stage on April 5th through the 7th. Tickets may be purchased through an online outlet, which may be found on the district's website and Facebook page. Next week, sophomores will be taking the ELA MCAS on March 26th and 27th. This is the MCAS 2.0 version, and is online for students. They'll be taking the MCAS on their Chromebooks, which they received this year. The STEM Hub visited the high school and middle schools project-led "The Way" classes. The high school classes, engineering, and the middle school classes, automation and robotics. The AP exam schedule is out for May, and classes are taking mock exams to prepare. And finally, the National Honor Society is doing appendices for patients, and all proceeds will be going to leukemia. And that's basically it.
That's all we can do?
That's all.
I have to say, first off, if anyone doesn't follow the district's Facebook page, they really need to, because all of these activities have been highlighted, and the pictures are fabulous, and it's wonderful to see so many student-oriented activities, and our athletics had a really great winter season. So congratulations to the basketball team, congratulations to our track team. Callie's here tonight. Pass it along to the rest. So great job. And I know we're going to hear from our DR group, and I know we're going to hear from Outdoor Adventure, too, which is going to be exciting. And thank you for sharing. Any, let's have some, oh, one other comment. The combined concert, I couldn't go to because there wasn't a parking spot to be found in this place. So I'm very disappointed I wasn't there, but I have heard rave reviews of the combined middle school, high school, and I really think it sounds like it was a fabulous evening, and I'm looking forward to more of those, and I'll have to just get here a lot earlier, like at 8:00 AM, and with my car or something. So that was a great idea for whoever put that together, so please pass along my words of, yeah, that was just wonderful from the feedback I've heard. And congratulations to the color guard, and that's just great. Okay. Our next presentation will be our Dominican Republic service trip. We have Don DRC with us tonight, and we have some of the students that participated. And there will be a presentation, so if the school committee wants to either move or if they can turn and see the presentation. Do you want another chair?
I can stand.
I'm going to stand as well.
Okay.
I'll just perhaps sit like this.
I'm on.
James. Yeah, well, this way you don't block anyone behind you.
Well, so you're comfortable, too.
Yeah.
Thanks, James.
You're welcome.
Okay. Well, why don't you start with introducing yourself and just the group?
Oh, I'm Mr. DRC, and Mrs. Chase is also here as well. We were the two chaperones, faculty that went to the Dominican Republic with these three kids and 12 others. And we're going to let them introduce themselves, and hopefully they can run this presentation all by themselves.
I think we should.
Yeah?
I'm Emma. I'm a junior.
I'm James. I'm also a junior.
I'm Callie. I'm a sophomore.
So we were in the Dominican Republic from February 15th to the 23rd. So I'm going to start by talking a little bit about the organization that we traveled with. So the direct contact we have with the organization was mostly from Larder. They were our IBCs, our volunteer coordinators. They basically, they acted as our translators, are like, are insight into the community, and they're wonderful, beautiful people, and we all got really good connections with them. And we're just a community itself. It's NGO. It's a non-governmental organization. It's a not-for-profit. So they mainly focus on empowering communities and volunteerism and sustainability. Thank you.
So the first day, we flew into Santo Domingo on Friday. We left the school at 3:30 in the morning, which was very fun. And we checked into Hotel Europa in Santo Domingo, which was an absolutely beautiful hotel in historical downtown of Santo Domingo. It was absolutely beautiful.
Our first full day in Santo Domingo, we took a tour, and we visited the Zona Colonial, which is a colonial sector of Santo Domingo. And we saw the First Church in the Americas and the First Clock in the Americas. And we also visited the burial site of Dominican historical figures, which is like Arlington Cemetery for the United States.
Just more photos.
Our second day, Sunday, we made our way to San Juan, which is about three and a half hours from Santo Domingo. It was about halfway point to the community. So San Juan's capital is the province in which we stayed. It's also the hometown of Larder, one of our IBCs. There, we visited the cathedral, and we had a really great breakfast. So actually, on the right is a statue of one of the three founders of the Dominican that's actually from San Juan, which is often regarded as a forgotten prophet.
Oh, this is a great slide.
This is my personal favorite picture of the last night's breakfast.
So where we lived and worked, we lived in Comunal in El Cercado, and we worked in Dorumbadero in El Cercado, which was about a 15, 10 to 15-minute truck ride back and forth.
We did quite a bit of work over there. But when we first got there, the house frame was built, and the roof was put on. And we dug the holes around the foundation for the cement to be poured in, and we made plywood molds to pour the cement into. And then we mixed the cement by hand, a lot of buckets of water, a lot of hard work. And then we would pour the cement into the plywood molds, and once that dried, we would peel it off, the plywood molds, and you'd have the bottom walls of the house. And then we took pine boards, and we nailed them up onto the house to form siding.
Me and Callie made a killer team with the siding on the front of the house. Just got to throw that out there.
And then our last day, we, in the community, we painted the house blue and white.
Oh, look, there's me and Callie working on the front of the house. Nice hat. Thanks. wore it all week.
So these are just some views of where we were. On Thursday, we climbed up the mountain, because we were, we were in the mountains of the Dominican. We usually take the beaches. We were in the mountains, but it was a beautiful place today.
The beneficiary family, we worked really closely with the family that was going to be receiving the Bridges house that we built. There were two brothers, Nelson and Liberato, and their 12-year-old daughter, Anna. The two brothers were actually deaf-mute, so they weren't able to verbally communicate, but I think it made it a little bit easier for us to communicate with them because we could communicate a lot through gestures, so that was really fun. They were working alongside us at the community the entire time. A lot of the community members were working with us. A lot of the kids our age were working with us, and they were there to help with anything you needed.
And one thing that Bridges really stressed was the fact that the family paid for the house, and so it wasn't a donation from Bridges to the family. It was like they paid for it, they worked for it. So it was more about empowering them and also giving them a place to live.
And one of Bridges' main things is sustainability. So they help them, and they make sure that they have the resources to make sure that they can sustain themselves.
The interactions with the youth, each night we would have a reflection, and one of the nights, we actually got together with a group of students from the school that was just down the street, and we compared how different school was for them compared to how it was to us. So for them, education is kind of a privilege almost. They have to work for their education, and for us, we're just given our education. So it was really interesting to see how much they value education versus how we're like, oh, I don't really want to go to school today. And they're like, oh, I want to go to school. I want to learn as much as I can, which was really interesting. And a lot of things we did with the kids, we did a lot of sports, a lot of hair braiding, very popular with the girls, and horseback rides or piggyback rides was a lot of fun with them.
So the community, we interacted every single day with the community. Some of us, well, most of us could barely talk to them, but we tried our best to communicate. We did lots of activities with them. We just hung out. We played sports, like Callie was saying. We danced together. And so we got to connect with them during our siesta time, like a break in the middle of the day, and even out of the worksite, there were lots of people around.
Oh, that's why I love the food that we had there. We had the most amazing chefs while we were in the community. They were so gracious, opened up their house and allowed us to come in there and cook us every single meal. It was amazing. So for breakfast, we had a lot of rice and, what's, beans, rice and beans. Rice and beans were everywhere. Yeah. A lot of fruit, a lot of fresh fruit, which was awesome. It was the best pineapple I think I've ever had in my life. A lot of plantains and bread with peanut butter and jelly. Mr. DRC was the peanut butter and jelly chef the entire week. In the Dominican Republic, the breakfast and the dinner were considered the smaller meals, and lunch is the largest meal. So a lot of times, we had pasta and vegetables, well, not pasta, but like, rice and vegetables. A lot of chicken and rice and beans. And for dinner, we always had rice and beans that were left over from lunch, and chicken, and a vegetable, or something like that.
One of my favorite part of the food is definitely all the fresh pressed and fresh-made juice. They have pie juice, lemonade, there was, plus pineapple juice, gaucho stuff.
At the end of each day, we would have a daily reflection, and one of those days, we talked about a word. We would all have a word, which we got the day we got there. And for instance, mine was responsibility. So we would talk about what we thought responsibility meant to us, but then what it would mean in the community, which was really interesting to see the difference there. And then one night, we met with the local youth, and we had like a talent show almost. There was a lot of singing and dancing, and we talked about Dominican culture and education. And then we had a Hawaiian, a Haitian drumming circle and dance our last night there, which was a lot of fun.
So after our long week of work, right before we came home, we had a free resort day at La Caya Espinalda, which was mostly with Apple. And so we ate like a buffet style lunch in there, and we got to just hang out by the beach.
Just something to add on to that, it's always a good time when you can sit on the beach and be served free fried chicken and pina coladas.
Non-alcoholic?
I was there. So for the final reflection, which was where a lot of tears were shown for the trip, we circle back to, as Callie mentioned, the word of the week. And we all kind of talked about how our perception of the word changed throughout the week while we were there. We talked about ways to bring the experience home, how to become agents of change. Again, Bridges' thing is sustainability, and it's sustainable to have a group of teenagers come build a house where they could take that money and just build a bunch of houses. The sustainable part of it would be to have those kids make a change. So that's the agents of change. And we also received these beautiful necklaces that are made out of the natural stone.
Of Laramie?
Laramie. And, yeah, I just cried a lot there.
The impact that this trip had on all of us, I think, was tremendous. We all came back with a very different view on other countries, and it was a positive impact, which was good. But we were able to see how other people lived, which was really humbling, but it was also very educational. And the impact that we brought to the families that we met there was very good. They were now able to have a home to live in, which was nice.
And so ever since we've got, arrived back home, we've been talking about how we're going to bring the trip home with us. So we've all talked about how our views on lives in the United States has changed since we got home. And honestly, they somewhat, a lot of people have talked about. One of her friends, most of the people in the group, is that we don't really know how to like, talk about it yet because like, it's a lot of processing, and it's a lot of having to understand what's going on. But we talked about how we want to share our experience with people around us and people at home, and educate others. And lots of the people in the group have shared that they feel like our privilege here in the United States is now definite to us because we saw a place where there's not as much.
Preguntas. Any questions? Got that one queued up.
Questions or comments?
It's hard to just combine all the feelings and experience that we had in just a short PowerPoint, but we're hoping to do that well.
So you're, what I heard is that you're trying to figure out what it's all meant, and how you're going to, you know, somehow articulate that back, not only in words, but through actions back here, right? So it'll take time, but the important part, I think, is that you do just that. You articulate some way through your actions what you, what you learned. For those of us who've been in third world countries, sometimes, or countries in need, it does change you regardless. So you have to, you have to figure out how to make it better, right, no matter where you are. So I do appreciate that comment, because it is hard to articulate when you have it so good, right? That's awesome.
I can see a question coming around.
No, I just want to thank you for putting this nice presentation together, and thank you for this trip of service. Thank you to Mr. DRC for bringing it to our school. I know that you were the one who came up with the proposal, and I think we have a nice group of change students who are willing to, sorry, who are willing to, you know, take that step and figure out how to make change. And I think that's the key moving forward. So thank you, and thank you, Mrs. Chase, for joining in all the fun. Lori and I both had kids who went on the trip. Emma's here, and her son Ryan went. And I don't know how much your son's told you, but I've heard just about nothing from my daughter, but that's okay.
I read, I read Ryan's little journal.
Oh, that one pulled a lot of tears.
A little hysterical, but I would never let it be read to anybody. I don't know, I don't know if, well, if you had read it.
On the bus ride, it was.
There were some dramatic.
I kept saying, you don't have to turn soon, do you? Are you sure you don't have to turn soon?
And just on behalf of all the students that went, we'd like to thank you, Mrs. DRC, for putting this all together for us, and Senator Chase for coming along with us and joining the fun, and Mrs. Vassell for being a part of it, and especially you guys for allowing us to go and being so excited for us to go. So thank you very much.
I just have one question for the chaperones. Did the trip meet your expectations for both the experience and the students' feedback?
I can say absolutely. It exceeded my expectations.
Good.
Yeah, for me, this was my first time in the Dominican Republic, and it was only the third time as I was going as a volunteer. And our, the two leaders that we had with us were met, and they were so amazing. So I was really thankful and glad that our group of 15 kids had an amazing experience, and our kids were unbelievable, just open, tried new things. It was great.
Good. Thank you.
Is this a yearly endeavor, or was that the, no, 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 I don't mean it that way. Is there a schedule in which these, these type of service trips happen? I didn't really mean to say yearly, I mean on a schedule.
I would, I would love, and I'm super open to doing it on a yearly or bi-yearly, or, yes, bi-yearly. Whatever the school committee and the school deems appropriate for the school, for the community. I'm more than willing to do it every year if we have the capacity to do that. If it takes every two years, I'm open to do that as well. I'd love to.
And on behalf of the students, we can just add on to that by saying a lot of us would, I think, now that some people have gone, I think we would be able to raise more awareness and excitement for the trip because now people know what it's about, how much fun they had, and a lot of people said, oh, I wish I won. Just another.
Thank you. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could we get maybe, could we get a copy of the presentation and maybe share it either on Facebook, website, or something?
You can re留下 the address.
I would love to. Yep. Yes.
Website.
Yep. We could do that.
Great. Well, next up, we have Mr. Don Frío and our Outdoor Adventure group. So come on now.
No, no pressure after that one was done.
I mean, what did you do? Climb a couple of ramps?
This interpretive dance totally good.
So thank you for inviting us to come. I've, this is my third year teaching here, and I would be lying if I said I didn't come here largely because of the Outdoor Adventure program. I'm an earth and space science teacher. That's my background. But I have my own outdoor adventure guiding service called Vertical World Adventures, and I absolutely adore taking kids, adults, whoever would want to or has any interest in going to the outdoors and having adventure. It's just like my big passion. So when I heard that I could teach science and outdoor adventure, I immediately hopped at the idea of trying to come and apply for this job. I've, you know, been really, really pleased having the opportunity to teach the kids and to share some of these experiences on campus and running field trips as well. So I invited Ms. Madison Ambrogi to come because I actually met her for the first time in the seventh grade, and that my first year here, every term, I had a different group of seventh graders that we did in an adventure ed program that lasted a term. So I met her first then in the seventh grade, and then now she's a freshman. She decided to take my class at the high school, and so I thought it would be fitting for her to come and talk a little bit about why she chose to do that. You know, I feel like, you know, I really love the program, but I'm glad to see that kids are really getting into it, and it seems like the program's been building in terms of numbers, which is like, you know, a double-edged sword, because there's a lot of kids who seem to want to, they want to come into the program, and, you know, there's a lot to manage kids outside. So obviously, it's, you know, it's wonderful to see so many kids excited to want to get involved in the program. What I decided to do, I knew I only had a few minutes, is I put together a slideshow with some pictures. I literally have probably 1,000 pictures from the last three years of stuff that we've done on campus and field trips that we've taken into the mountains and, you know, on some of the local lakes and ponds that we've paddled and hiked and done mountaineering and rock climbing and rappelling. And this year, we got into ice climbing, which was a really big hit, and kids seemed to really love it, and should get to come on that trip as well. So I'll just start this off and let this run in the background. I figured it might be easier, just since we didn't have a lot of time to, sorry, run this in the background as we talked a little bit about the program itself. So, let's see here. I don't know why it's not starting from the beginning, but I'll just let it run through. I don't know why it's not starting from the beginning, but I'll just let it run through. So, um, you know, here's some, some ideas, obviously, that, um, that I believe to be true, right? That, that taking kids outdoors and spending time in nature is critically important. Um, we're at a time now where, you know, as adults and, and young people that we spend a crazy amount of time sitting in front of screens, um, surrounded by four walls. And it seems like we're maybe getting outside less and less and, and finding other ways to entertain ourselves. Um, so I feel like that's one of the biggest reasons why I think outdoor adventure is so important for, for young people especially to develop this love and, um, sort of, uh, love for being outside and, and all the, all the wonders that go along with being outdoors and, and having any kind of experience outdoors, whether it's like hiking or something more extreme like climbing. Um, so what we've tried to do with the program, which was started by Robert Tremblay, um, who I had actually had the privilege of working with when I was younger. Um, I guided for his company called, uh, Mountain Links Outdoor Adventures. So we had had a connection there. Um, and he was a big time paddler. He loved all aspects of outdoor adventure. So it was fitting that he was a person to come and sort of establish this program here. Um, my, my forte is more into technical climbing, um, and mountaineering. So, you know, the direction that I've sort of been taking the, uh, the class has been a little bit different. And I know he, um, was really big into doing the wilderness survival stuff, which we've also tried to bring in some of those skills as well. But we've maybe kind of, you know, uh, dialed that back a little bit in terms of doing like a multi-day survival solo experience, which is, is really challenging and extremely worthwhile, but really difficult to, to kind of pull off and, and to, uh, and to manage, especially if you're alone and trying to find the resources to do that. So, um, but we are still working in those sort of wilderness survival skills. Um, but we're just not doing the solo adventure stuff anymore at this time. Maybe in the future we'll be able to, you know, come up with a way to, to bring that back. Um, so, um, again, I, I brought Maddie because she has like, you know, got introduced to my course in, uh, the middle school and now she's back again in the high school. And she's quite an outstanding athlete. So, you know, sometimes you think that, you know, someone like her may be more drawn to just a traditional physical education course and, you know, mine being really an alternative to traditional physical education. Um, I get a wide range of, of kids, um, with different interests and, um, and skills. So she's clearly an outstanding athlete and has been a, a real asset to my class. Um, but I was kind of hoping maybe you could talk a little bit about, you know, what you felt like when you first, uh, took the course in the seventh grade and why you wanted to come back again in, in the, in the high school.
Okay, so, yeah, definitely. Um, I have to admit, when I was put into your class in the seventh grade, it was more of just a passing, my name showed up on your list. But as, I'm sorry, but as we continued further into the year and we learned what type of berries you could eat outside, what, how to identify mint leaves, there's something just so rewarding about knowing things about nature, especially in such, I feel like there's such a generational gap where we spend, I mean, kids my age spend so much time inside in front of screens, not really accustomed to learning this type of stuff. It's so appealing to when you finally get the chance. Um, so I thought that was incredibly interesting, just learning. There's so much stuff outside that honestly, most of us have grown prone to ignoring. And then taking a class this year, I was very excited because la, in seventh grade, it was more just an educational experience. We did some of the, um, elements in the gym, which was also very fun. Um, but then growing into a freshman, being able to take your course in high school, being able to say that you've climbed a sheer wall of ice, you can't compare that to anything, honestly.
She did an outstanding job, by the way, as, as well as many other boys and girls who happened to come with us, but.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, ice climbing, we've gone on, we've gone snowshoe hiking. We've learned how to start bonfires from a flint and steel. I think there's just something, it, there are just some things that you can't learn off of YouTube. And I think, you know, and I think, um, environmental education, I think that's one of them. I think we're very lucky to be able to have this, um, just program at our school, this ability to learn some things that other people may not be able to, like, they may not have the means to.
So, um, you know, we do have plans, like, like I said, we did kind of, kind of reel back a little bit, the, the solo survival trip that they did in the winter. Obviously, there's a lot of inherent danger. Um, the weather in New England is pretty unpredictable. Um, kids were definitely reliant on the skills that they learned in class. So what we're trying to do now is really shift a little bit more toward, um, teaching those skills, but then giving the kids an opportunity to take like either spring backpacking or fall backpacking to actually go out and plan their own, um, backpacking kind of trip where we go camping and then they're able to bring some of those skills, um, to the table when we go. Um, but they're not going to be, you know, uh, left on their own and, and monitored, um, which is a really amazing thing to be able to do it, but it, it is really difficult to coordinate and, and you need quite a bit of resources to do it. So maybe in the future we can kind of bring some of that stuff back. I know some kids seemed a little disappointed when I told them that we weren't going to be kind of continuing to do that at this time. Uh, but kids seem like they've been pretty excited to be able to have the opportunity to go camping, um, which, you know, I think everybody should do at some point in their lives is go out and, you know, be able to, uh, you know, cook up your food over the fire and, you know, enjoy a, a full day and an evening out in, in nature. You know, and you're really immersed in nature. Um, so, um, we're just really excited. I, I'm super thrilled to be here and, um, I hope this program gets to continue. And, um, I know like that the numbers for my, my, um, program have literally been increasing to the point where we're, we're having to like limit it to how many kids can come because, you know, I'm kind of a one man show and it, you know, there's, you know, only so much you can do on your own. Um, but, uh, yeah, I, I don't know if you guys have any questions for us about, um, some of the activities we're doing or, um, if you want to hear a little bit more about, um, some of the, like, you know, the highlights of, of experiences that either she's had. I know she was definitely super pumped on, uh, the ice climbing trip that we just took. And we were fortunate enough to have a decent, you know, season this year to have some good local ice. But, um, love to, you know, take questions from you if you have any questions or, uh, anything you'd like to know about the program.
Comments, questions?
I actually love the enthusiasm, you know, the awareness and the enthusiasm. I want to, can you just talk a little bit about the team building experiences with the, with the program?
Um, definitely. So literally everything you have to do either with a buddy or in a group. We've done a lot of practice with belaying and rappelling off of, um, either the elements in the gym or back in seventh grade, we rappelled down a rock wall, which was very, which was really cool. And learning how to tie the knots and just building such a trust with the people in your group, even if you weren't necessarily close with them before, knowing that they're all hooked up with you in their hand, you know? It just, it builds something that it, it'd be difficult to achieve anywhere else.
And have those carried on throughout your school career with those students?
Oh.
Students that you didn't know and trust?
Honestly, yes, I've made maybe six new friends already in my class, just in it. I think having, um, a class that incorporates each, um, like, grade of the high school, I think that helps a lot too because I've grown relationships with people that I may not have, had, have had the opportunity to otherwise. So, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we really, we're big on to focusing on like the redundancy of safety, you know what I mean? I know myself personally as a, as a climber, um, you know, if I go way back, I've been climbing for like 25 years. But I remember before I got into climbing, I, I might drive some days and, you know, forget to buckle up. And then it sort of was like through climbing, you, you start to realize, geez, you know, anything can really happen. You really start thinking more in, in sort of a safety, in a safety way where, you know, you start to realize that you have to sort of make sure you have your backups in place. So when the kids are belaying, they're either doing group belays or once they've learned how to, you know, belay on their own, they have other people who are backing them up. Um, we also are incorporating, um, grigories, which are sort of like a self-locking device where if a kid accidentally let go, the rope isn't allowed to come through the device without them pulling a handle. Um, because I have my own guiding service and I outfit my trips, um, you know, I'm able to bring some of my equipment in. That, that was part of the reason why we were able to go ice climbing, because I do outfit my trips. Um, and for me, I absolutely love it. So, uh, you know, just to be able to give the kids the opportunity to be able to get out there and try this stuff, um, knowing that they may never get to do this again, or maybe the, this will be something that will spark, you know, an interest in, in them that like carries through the rest of their life like it has for me. Because I know for me, you know, being involved in adventure has just been only positive, you know, in the relationships that I formed and, um, giving me, you know, something to do with all the energy that I have as, as, as a person, you know, and, and sharing the, these experiences with others, it really does bring you together and, you know, help you to, you know, form stronger bonds with people and, and really build stronger relationships and really works on your communication skills with each other. You know, making sure you're being very clear, um, you know, the communication skills that we teach through the climbing. Um, I always feel like these things are, you know, a, a great metaphor for life and living your life the right way. You know, checking and double checking and making sure that we're communicating a way that we know what each other is trying to get across. So, you know, there's never any miscommunication, you know? Um, so, uh, thanks for having us and, do you have a question?
No, just one comment has a great implication to STEM. We do, um, you know, a lot of, um, talking here academically about STEM and how it affects the students. Right there with the mechanisms that you're using, they can see the actual application and actually probably develop what they would like to see in the future for that. So the math and the science is strong, physics.
There really is. There's a lot of science that goes into it. We do try to talk about it, you know, talk about, you know, forces and why you have to do things certain ways.
Yes.
And, you know, we, we, uh, we got involved this year. I, I carried this over from my previous school, um, the WPI Water Rocket Competition, uh, the Goddard Cup, which we competed in for the first time, uh, last year, but we're going to do again this year, which I do with the astronomy class. But I also opened up the kids who get involved in the, um, the Outdoor Adventure Club because it's something that happens after school at the end of the year. And it's really fun to get out and just build water rockets and, you know, uh, learn about how to, you know, launch these things and, and learn about the science behind it and, and try to, you know, get them to hone their skills so they can compete against other kids, you know, throughout the Commonwealth. So it's been really fun. In fact, we took second place here. Um, my own, my own two boys who, uh, at the Paxton Center School right now, but like, they actually won the whole thing, which was pretty amazing because I joked around with my head schoolers that if my, if my little guys beat them, that, that, you know, it was going to be, you know, and then, and they ended up like pulling it off. My, my little guys pulled it off, which was really amazing and made for an exciting afternoon. But we took first and second, so it was, it was great. It was great. So, but yeah, we're really looking forward to that again this year and, and hopefully, uh, Gansett can bring home another prize.
Thank you.
It was going so well.
One last question.
Sure.
What is up next for the group? You just did ice climbing, so it's our thawing adventure.
We, we have basically, well, we had planned for the middle school. Um, so I have a different group every term. So I tried to do one, uh, you know, full day field trip with them. And we had scheduled a Mount Manadok, uh, basic mountaineering, a trip up, up Manadok this Friday, but with the weather coming in, we just like sent out the, the news to, to reschedule it. And we're going to try to do it next week on Thursday. But then we have some other Manadok trips to the high school. We have some rock climbing, rappelling coming up. And then as things really thaw out, we'll start doing some of the paddling on some of the local, we usually go to like Lake Dennison or up to Gilmore, somewhere really pretty and picturesque.
Well, thank you. Thank you for bringing your enthusiasm and sharing your skills with the students because it's, um, it's wonderful to see the satisfaction, I think, that they get from being able to do all of these things. And I, I know the Dominican trip too, I had heard the same message that you, that you push them and they learn they have strengths and abilities that they didn't know. So I think it's fabulous. Thank you.
Ooh, thank you.
All right, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Kazavant.
Okay.
For a little presentation.
So I don't know how well our little trick worked. I don't think very well at all. So what we tried to do, of course, is to bait Ms. Fliss here under the guise of talking about the, the London trip. And I have.
Which we do want to hear about.
Which we do. I mean, I don't want to make it sound like we don't, I mean, whatever, it's London. But I mean, it's, it's not ice climbing, but it's, it's okay. But I, I want to say that we were very, very fortunate. Um, well, we're very fortunate to have all the teachers we have, and, and I mean that. But Ms. Fliss was congratulated, uh, back in February by the Mass Insight Education Research, um, folks. And her name, uh, was awarded to her through her work and her dedication. But she is, uh, one of only 30 Massachusetts AP teachers to be recognized as a 2019 Partners in Excellence Teaching Award for her, for her exemplary work in advanced placement, STEM and English program. Um, so I didn't know anything about this award. Uh, I didn't, quite frankly, a little birdie told me that she won the award. Um, could have been her husband, I'm not sure, but it could. But I received, I received an email from a Susan Lucy, I think it's how you pronounce me, it's the present CEO. And so I still don't understand, so I called, as I do, and I said, I don't understand, is this, how prestigious is this? And she laughed at me and said, um, there are over 350 folks who want this award. She's one of three. So I, I said, well, thank you, that's what I want to hear. It doesn't surprise anyone who knows Ms. Fliss, not a bit. Um, I will tell you that when I've asked, they said, oh, yeah, that, that sounds about right. Um, but we wanted to make sure that we formally, we, we definitely congratulated her and may have, you know, we, we had to have permission to do this. There was, there was some, there was some strong-arming, of course, but, um, but we wanted to formally, honestly, just congratulate her, um, on her award. Again, it does not, uh, for one minute surprise any of the folks, the students who've had her, the people who work with her, that she would be a recipient of this award. Um, and we're going to go down in April, I believe, um, and it's down to Holy Cross and she'll be formally recognized at Holy Cross. So I think a young man, actually has something to think. You have something? Good, phew, because that scared me. So he thought that that might be a good thing to do. So, but I want to formally congratulate you.
Did, did she prepare a speech?
No, no, I don't know when she actually knew. I'm sure it was quite early in the process, but, uh, but we definitely, uh, you know, we were going to throw her, we did pressure her to come, uh, and said that we're going to throw her a yearbook picture up on Facebook, if she did. So anyway, but, uh, but anyway, so.
Yes, congratulations.
Yes.
It's wonderful to see our teachers be recognized publicly for all the hard work and dedication that they have for the school district. We all know how wonderful yourself and so many others in the district are. So it's great to be able to publicly say that and get the word out, how, what a great faculty and staff that we have here in Eric Gansett. So thank you, congratulations.
The kids make me look good.
Can I just say something quick?
No.
Please? Um, I am currently in supposed AP plus and I have never felt so confident with AP plus and how excited I am with Texas because I would take the exam, I feel so well prepared and all thanks for all her hard work and dedication that she does for all of us. She's always there for us emotionally. That was some tears, I don't know, but.
What tears there?
Good cry, Miss Bangle. It's all about social and emotional work, so Mrs. West is perfected.
Sure, there's a lot of promise thrown in here.
Well, thank you. And on that note, we would love if you would give us a, an update on the, yes, come on down and tell us how things are going.
Hi, I, I don't have much like the other professors, but since we've spoken, um, I had my parent meeting and I have 23 students signed up to attend the London Paris trip, um, two of which are not enrolled in the automatic payment, which just comes out of their accounts every month, but they're still making payments from what I can see on my end, so.
So 23, that's fabulous.
So 23 and we're comp one chapron for every six. So as of right now, it's, um, myself going and, um, Mrs. Smith and we'll kind of work out the details as we get closer.
Well, great, thank you for giving us the update. That's very exciting. I know, um, that we weren't, you weren't sure exactly how many.
Yeah, I actually was honestly very surprised that that many kids signed up so quickly.
I think it's a testament to the, the trip that you chose and that automatic payment and being so prepared and advanced made a big, a big difference.
And I think the parents felt really confident about the insurance, you know, if they are, if anybody is ill, they're able to go to the hospital at no cost. And, um, given the recent riots in Paris, you know, we. given the recent riots in Paris, you know, we do have the opportunity as we get closer to change the location at no cost to us, so I think it's just a very safe and good program.
Fantastic.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Yes, congratulations.
Yes.
Okay, moving on, we have our business manager's report.
There's, there's nothing unusual about this month than any other month. I don't know if anyone has questions, but, um, at our April meeting, we will have the auditor come in, he's finalizing all of the financials and the reports now, and then he'll get those to me and then we'll get those to you before he comes in April.
Does anybody have any questions? Thank you everybody for coming in. Thank you for giving up your evening to come here and present to us. We appreciate it. Does anyone have any questions on the numbers or any budgetary questions for this fiscal year?
No, we have those sheets every month, so they're well-aligned.
Okay.
We're good.
All right. So the next item is our FY20 school year calendar. Um, there are two options and I'll let Dr. Kazavant talk about what the options are and, uh, and how we got there.
So traditionally, and I say that from a very short perspective, uh, of only a couple of years, but we, we have, uh, traditionally started before Labor Day, you know, whether it be three days, four days, whatever, but, um, and we do that, quite frankly, because of the weather. We never know how many, God forbid, snow days, but this year coming, FY20, is, is different, a lot different, because we'll be opening the new Templeton Center Elementary School. Um, as far back as a year ago, I will tell you that the, um, the OPM and, uh, the folks who are coordinating the building and everything, they, they came to us and asked if at all possible, if we could start after Labor Day. They want every possible day that they could possibly get, uh, to move in furniture, you know, that kind of thing. And they understand that by, with schools, that there's very limited amount of opportunities that we have, either we start a couple of days before Labor Day or we start the day after Labor Day, you know, the break. So what you'll see in option A is exactly that, the opportunity to start school after Labor Day. That triggers a couple of different things because we've kind of been in a pretty good, uh, I guess, role, so to speak. It triggers a couple of things such as, um, I'm just trying to think of the big, well, first off, graduation will be June 5th, because it pushes the days so many, you know, so many days, et cetera, last day, et cetera, that's one. Um, per the contract, pardon me, uh, if you do start after Labor Day, um, the folks are not required to work the day before the weekend, which never really has come up before because we've started so far before Labor Day. So, anyway, those are some of the, just the real basics, that it really comes out, uh, or looks, looks to be just like the rest of the days, uh, the rest of the calendars that you've seen. You'll notice a couple of variants of, like, we have fewer half-day PDs. That was, um, part of, you know, going through our PD committee, um, and we will have more opportunities to do professional development after school, et cetera, uh, so we didn't need as many, uh, half-day PDs. I'm trying to think of some of the other, the other just glaring pieces here, but, um, and again, option B would be what you're, what we traditionally would start and that would be prior to the Labor Day break, which again, um, might take a few very nee-, well-needed days to take care of some of the ins and outs of moving into the middle.
So if I'm looking at this correctly, the first option is we would start, uh, traditionally like we-
Way back.
Yep, before Labor Day. The last day was June 10th. The option that you're presenting with, uh, keeping the new building in mind, would start us af-, right after Labor Day, is that what the Tuesday after Labor Day?
Exactly. It would be September, third.
Third, yep.
If I find that, yes.
And then the last day ends up being the 16th, which is a Tuesday, and that still leaves us five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 days if we needed to and hopefully we'll have some, some e-learning bag discussions before then, but-
Yes. Yes.
So, um, any, I'll ask first a leading question. From your perspective, what calendar would you recommend to the school committee and then the school committee will ask you any questions they have?
Sure. I, I think that given the circumstance that, you know, my preference this year is to start after Labor Day. Given that we won't have any more, um, snow days this year, and I'm not trying to be funny, we, we're gonna, it's going to give them plenty of time with no one around to do what they need to do. Uh, for this time, yeah, normally I get very concerned because I like to start as early as possible, just given our weather, but I think in this case, we should definitely, it's my recommendation that we start after Labor Day to give, um, the folks who will be doing all the moving and all those type of things, uh, the time to do that.
I mean, the school will be done, it's just the delivery is current to the, it'll be a problem, but that's already going on, the, the contract's signed, and also, so if you've got it in early, you should be able to get it in on, on your time.
But they're cautious, they, yeah.
Little question.
Well, I think you're still gonna have some setup to the building, so you're building some setups, some operational, like you think just one-
Building a furniture is going to be part of that. They have, some of that furniture has to be built when it arrives on station, so.
And I'm sure our, our teachers will love the opportunity to have a few extra days to get in. This is all gonna be bare walls for them, so they're building their classrooms up, so.
I'm sure the building is gonna be some more of this as well, operational wise, so.
And the community's anxious to get in and be able to see.
Yeah, they are.
All right. Any questions? Lori?
Were you not originally talking at some point about getting rid of, um, April vacation?
We, we have, the last conversation in earnest that we had about the, was, I think it was two or maybe two school years ago. Um, the, the calendar committee took April vacation and actually it was February vacation, I believe, and they spread it out through March. We had a couple of different options, anyway. Um, we looked into that and we, we thought that we would need obviously some, uh, to, some time to get some feedback and we put out a survey, this was again, last year, uh, at that point, and most folks were, although it was closer than I thought, but it, most, most folks said, look, just keep the vacations the way, the way they are. Um, we then said, okay, well then, but we need to really look at this and how it affects learning and we had a discussion about that, but then this year came, meaning what's coming and what kind of, from our perspective, kind of, kind of took over was the fact we've gotta get this building open. We didn't want to mess with the schedule any more than this will already probably be very different and we decided not to, um, take April vacation or February vacation and do anything, um, different for that, for, you know, just given what we're doing with the new school, actually, so we didn't want to have too many things going on at the same time.
But that option may be open going forward?
Absolutely. Uh, the, 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 the calendar committee themselves, I, I personally feel, uh, was a very well-thought-out option, um, and they did a lot of neat things with that time. February vacation only has four actual vacation days in it, one of them is a holiday. So they took those four days and they sp- spread them out in through March, one of the versions, through some, uh, long weekends, et cetera. It was, was, I thought was very well-done. We just weren't ready at that moment in time, we did the survey, but certainly can revisit, revisit it in any-
Okay. The other question I have is, is it state mandated as to when April vacation is?
No.
Well, the, the, the only thing though is Patriots' Day falls-
Well, Patriots' Day falls, so there's another holiday. Patriots' Day is a holiday, um, and so that's only four days as well.
So drives within the week. It's the, it's the third, it's the third two, Monday, third Monday.
Third Monday.
Yeah. I was thinking, why don't we just attach it to the Good Friday so that they don't-
Yeah, but it's because we have to give that Patriots' Day off, so, because that's a state holiday, so. Any other questions? If, uh, if we have no more questions and the school committee so desires, I would take a motion to accept one of these calendars and approve it for FY20.
All right, can I have the number of the first?
Oh, sure. Go ahead, no.
If the, all right, if we're looking at option A, and you're looking at April, and the 10th is Good Friday, you have that off, and the 20th is one of the-
Patriots' Day.
Patriots' Day.
That extra day. Yeah, that'd be good though.
That would be good.
She was thinking that week in between and full camp.
Take them a whole week and then next-
I think for, for next year, knowing where, um, Christmas and New Year's holiday falls, it might be an interesting discussion to entertain, looking at February and or April and how, how they fall and getting two full weeks off, um, around that Christmas holiday. Instead, I think the, I think it'll fall on the third, yeah, like next year, not this one, for the following one. So it might be a good year, next year might be a good year to entertain, looking at how we might be able to better distribute vacation days and minimize impact on learning at the same time.
There are many schools that don't have Good Friday off to gain a day in the schedule. Um, we still have it off.
I believe contractually, we have-
UFCW, um, contractually has that as one of its days.
Well, that is something that can be looked at for building in the morning.
Sure.
As well, if you're looking at that.
Yes. I think absolutely, that gives, that just adds one more area flexibility if we need to make up a day or move things, yes.
And it comes at a good time for, for the future.
Yes.
Okay, do you have your motion to vote?
I, I would entertain a motion for one of these calendars if someone would like to make one.
I'll make the motion.
And would you like the option A starting after Labor Day?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion for option A, starting after Labor Day, and I have a second. Any other comments, questions or discussion?
Just a comment, but, um, it's fine, I just want to make sure we do continue the discussion on the e-learning as well, if we, um, if we expect it.
We could have actually put something together, this, but it was so packed with, uh, our presentations that I didn't, I didn't even think to mention it during our, so, but it will for, uh, today, but we'll be fine to do that.
You know, you can't so much excitement.
Yeah, you can only clap so many times during one meeting.
Yeah, with all the ice climbing, we could probably come to school.
I'll tell you what, he teaches them math, yes, exactly. All right, so I have a motion and a second for option A, which is starting, uh, first day of school will be September 3rd. Um, any other questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, unanimous. So we have option A will be our FY20 school year calendar. And thank you if you would pass along our regards to the, not only the calendar committee, but to the other committees that are out there that have input to the calendar committee and thank them for working to figure out, uh, a schedule that'll work for the students and, and the faculty and everyone else. Okay. Next up, public forum. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak?
I think I'm still off.
Shabby, you're cut off.
Yeah, I'm public here.
And DEA, we have Mrs. Parker out there.
No, just, I think that DEA should all, we should all just be proud of the amazing things that are being enacted through the management and, um, of the, of the money.
Thank you. I'm, to your point, I, I think it's exci-, I love having these presentations in our meetings. I think it says so much to the community. We don't get a chance, uh, to, to do a lot of that because we have a lot of business and it's just, it's good stuff.
Because while my kids grow up, I would just make them hear it.
All right, thank you. Um, school committee, any school committee comments?
The only thing I want to comment on, and I keep thinking of it every year at this time, and I always forget, something like, years ago, we used to have a picture of the school committee in the yearbooks and we haven't done it in years, so I didn't know if I'd all thought about giving them in the yearbook again.
I, well, I, you know, I, I joke, because of course my mother was on school committee with Mr. Mason many years ago.
Wow.
And I loved watching her hair evolve to many, many styles, um, in the yearbook, which was always very exciting, um, but I, I, I agree, I think it would be nice, um, we, we sometimes get forgotten in the mix and, you know.
You save your austerity, yeah.
So I wasn't in the yearbook last year, but, you know, we can associate it with, and I must, yeah, next year.
And then we can probably draw a mustache. Yeah, I mean, any other, what everybody had to, I mean, we could work something out, that would be great. We could get a picture at some point.
Texting or, um, emailing or-
Okay, great. Well, if you want to just let Dr. Kazavant know it may or may not be possible, that would be great. Thank you. Good point.
Anything else?
Okay, well, next up, we have the FY20 budget. We had, uh, new business, we have coffee and cupcakes with Dr. Kazavant.
I'm gonna tell you, um, this is not a good thing, that cupcake will follow me, uh, probably to my grave. What's that?
How long did you have?
So far this week? Several.
So I just, I just want to point out that I think I had heard in central office, there's some sort of diet challenge going on.
I'm winning.
So I, I was saying, is this sabotage?
Big waiter.
Yeah.
I just want to know if it's white.
I, yeah. So, um, first off, before we even get started with that, Anne Marie, to my Ronnie's, Kate or Susan, have, we've been kind of a traveling minstrel show, uh, and so they, they have done all of the hard work, quite frankly, um, and I have to thank them for that because it's been long, it's been a long night so far. It really, really, really has. So I have to thank them because it's been wonderful that they've been there. So we've had four, well, no, we've had three. We've had three of these coffees, so to speak. First one was on Monday at 10:00 AM. We, we varied the times as much as possible, just to try to be as accessible, uh, to, to as many people as we could. So we didn't receive, we didn't see anybody on Saturday morning, which is actually good because a few staff members came down and I-
Saturday or Monday.
What did I say, Saturday, sorry, Monday, sorry. Um, I don't know what date it is, uh, quite frankly, so there were a few staff members coming down and we, we prac-, I practiced. I, I, we went through this and I asked them some different questions about how to present a few things and I thought, it was worth its weight in gold. So that night, uh, went down to Philoston, and we had four, four or five folks, I think, at least four, and that, you know, we, we talked about a lot of, we talked about a lot of things, that was about an hour and a half, and just before this meeting, we had three folks. Uh, and what we're going to do, the, the goal, uh, is to have at least 12 meetings prior to May, which, which is a lot, well, we're probably gonna leave out the cupcakes because someone here is sick of baking cupcakes, so, um, we might go to first. But what we've, what we've learned in, you know, in talking with the folks that we, we have is that, um, I, I would like to think that we're, we're really giving them some new information, um, trying to break down the information, which can be very dense at times and, you know, very hard to, we're hopeful that it, we're presenting it in a way, um, that's understandable, because there's a lot of, obviously a lot of moving parts to a lot of different things. So, um, we think we've done that. At the end of this week, uh, we have, we have one more this week and that's Friday and-
10:30.
What, sorry?
10:30.
10:30. But after that, we're going to put together a, basically a newsletter of any questions, um, that have come up, any new kind of findings, so to speak. The last question, the last thing I say during it is that, look, we're looking for feedback, looking for help. You know, we, you know, we sometimes could be kind of too close to this and can't see the trees of the forest and we explain the whole situation out as best we can, um, and the questions have been excellent. And so it's worked out, it's worked so far. So our next, our next, uh, visit will be next week and it's, uh, the same day as the Science Fair. Fair at Phillipston.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday. And during about the same time, and then again on April 2nd. So we're going to put this all out and we, we are pushing this information out, it's, we're doing it in every possible means. And we've, you know, we're trying to do our best to explain the whole situation, and I think it's been well received, I think. So, that, that's the feedback that we have so far. So it's been, I think it's, we've, we've talked a lot, talked a lot, talked a lot about numbers, so.
Do you, were you asked any, any surprising questions that, you know, that, again, being so close to things, sometimes you're on the side of.
Yeah, so I think that we're, so how I've opened up all these conversations, what questions do you have? Because I can just hop in back into PowerPoint and, you know, you know, and really kind of delay the question that folks really want to know. So we, we really started off that way. I think Phillipston, the meeting in Phillipston was probably the most enlightening. A lot of that was about, well, we hear that if there isn't, you know, an override, ultimately, we kind of go through what all that means, the process, but what does that mean? And, because the question was asked, and what would you do to find a million dollars? Have to consolidate elementary schools? What does that mean? Does that mean you're going to close? No. And so we, we've, we've had, those were, that was a very fruitful conversation, I thought. I think the numbers, to some people, are surprising. Now, again, when you're so close to that, when you deal with these numbers all the time, they're not surprising, because you deal with them all the time. So when I said that, you know, currently there are 68 students in Phillipston from the, out of 160 currently, that surprised a few people. And, but, but we've, that situation's been that way for a bit, and we know this, right? So when I say, wow, we've got 250 some odd, you know, choice students, and, you know, that's like, oh my God, I can't believe we have that. These numbers, I'm glad to get them out there, because we talk about these numbers, you know, so easily, but they're not always so apparent and, you know, people do, it's, it's not something you pick up for light reading. So, I, I don't think that we've really been, when I say an interesting question, although we had a couple today about the process, in terms of how the warrants are being written in Templeton, what some folks felt about that process and how that could quickly go to the 1/12 scenario right from the get-go without going through a bunch of other steps, given how things could work out, was actually, I would be very candid, I had to think there for, sit there and think, Dan Marine, we said, boy, yeah, that could happen that way. So, meaning that this has been a good, I think it's been a good back and forth of the conversation, it's been very cordial, it's been, I think, and the cupcakes helped that, of course.
Great, well, we look forward to more feedback.
Sure, yep.
More sessions.
What date is the warrant, does the warrant have to be submitted?
I don't know that, I, that was the one question I didn't ask him.
It's usually 10 days before the meeting, but I don't know what their specific timeframe is.
So do we have, have they asked for any input from the school committee?
Well, I will say candidly that I just received, you know, the question whether or not I was coming to the select board meeting tonight. Conveyed that, that I'm at the school committee meeting tonight. So I don't know what that, how that got turned around, but I don't know, I've not been asked officially. I will, of course, in a month, you know, my circuit, so I will go.
I mean, you're available, but the point is, we need to make sure we know.
Right, because we've had instances in the past where they had the number wrong, so we really need to ensure that we're on board.
And I will, I'll reach out tomorrow, I just obviously, the, this, the actual meeting might go on, but I'll definitely respond back.
Well, if they need some input as well from the school committee, that's, you know, we're available as well.
Sure.
Because we do need to work together.
Absolutely.
I mean, a team of three or four parents asking questions, not going to get it, so.
I have a feeling that these numbers will start to grow, very candid, as I said, to every group, the next meeting is so-and-so, tell five friends.
Yeah.
You know, and if they, if they have questions, if, if not, then, you know, we're going to.
But they also need to be hearing it from the town, is how it's going to get some steam and, I just don't see it yet. So we're available. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on, our next is just our typical enrollment update, and I'll roll that into the School Choice Out survey, because I know they're tied together.
So, enrollment, I'm going to, if you just give me, just a minute to pull that back up, but the enrollment has stayed static, as it does this time of year. You're not receiving anybody, you know, any, any deep moves left and right. What I would say about the enrollment, though, is that next month, well, let me take a step back. We, we have opened up the portal only for folks to apply, because we were receiving so many phone calls, it just was really, honestly, hampering business. As we have said in our presentations, we have 50 some odd folks who have already applied for School Choice into this district. 26 of them are kindergartners, as, so, and, but, there are others, of course, at other grade levels, et cetera. It would be something, I would, you know, I would ask that, that next month, being April, we, we may want to consider accepting the, you know, at least, opening up School Choice for those areas that are available, because we do have a number of students whom are applying for grade levels that are, that, that have availability, for the lack of a better word, regardless of what happens. And I'm talking at the middle and high school, obviously. We're not talking the elementary. I mean, that's, I mean, I would hope that, you know, that's fairly obvious, but we are seeing folks trying to make plans for next year. We've been called on several occasions, and I think that we would rather know sooner rather than later. Again, very specific areas, very targeted grade levels, and we can obviously speak about that next month. So with, you know, something to do with.
Definitely add that to the.
Yeah, well, and we'll, just to give you that. So, yeah, we're still at this, honestly, from last month, we're still 1422 in the district and I think we're at 1420 last, you know, last month, so. In terms of the, so tasked several months ago with a very specific request of a School Choice Out survey, to, to ascertain why folks would not want to leave and be educated someplace, someplace else. So we expanded that to all School Choice Out, which was asked, homeschool and any student who goes to a charter school. So, in all in total, we, that's 227 total students or 148 families. So we sent out 148 surveys. And we received, well, first off, 15 returned back to us, returned to sender. So whether their address has changed or they've moved, so from there. But out of the, out of the 148 surveys sent out, 15, of course, returned with no address. And we received a total of 39 responses out of the, out of the balance of 130 some odd surveys. So, we, basically, in essence, we asked, and I, I know that I presented the, the survey itself, and, but ultimately, we asked just really a couple basic questions, you know, what did you think most notable strengths of the narrative answer was in the school district before they left? Or just what do you think in general? And we, we found that, that the faculty and staff, which is not surprising, you know, was, was identified as, regardless of why they left, that they felt that that was our strength. What factors led to the decision to educate your child in the educational setting that they're currently in? Again, a wide range of, again, of answers, but 35, no, 41% was more academic options in the new district. And so interestingly, it is interesting, because in our school improvement, or district improvement plan, and actually in this budget, you, you see the, the attempts to change that and to work, of course, it's not, it doesn't happen overnight, but certainly we are, we're trying to do that. So, again, there were a lot, a lot, a lot of comments, they could just comment as much as they wanted to, and certainly we'll, we'll provide this to you. But what sources of information did folks use to change, to choose their, their new educational setting and friends, family, neighbors? That was the, by, by a wide margin, was, was the preferred selection method. What notable strengths of the educational setting is they currently attend? We've, we've talked about that, but they, curriculum instruction and academic achievement were two, two areas that were identified in their new, in their new setting. And, again, we, there was sports and there were, you know, school culture, a lot of these were really neck and neck, quite frankly. And, but overall, I, I wish, I guess, that I received, these are not easy to, to read, some of them were very specific, which I would never, of course, pass along, some of it was just, just inappropriate, quite frankly. But it, it did give us a, a window as to what, you know, we should improve and are we on the right track? And I, I have to say that, as hard as some of these were to, to read, we are on the right track, we're, we're getting back there, right? So academics, of course, STEM, you know, you saw several different programs, there was something about culture, a woman wrote quite, quite eloquently about culture, and you see that, you know, that some of the programs that you have there is, is addressing a lot of that. So, ultimately, and we're glad we did it, I wish more would have come back, 39 responses, you know, not, not, not a lot, but.
Good for a survey.
I, I think good for a survey, especially when they don't need to respond to them. They're, I'll think, you know, they're not here, so, and they didn't have to respond, so I, I do, I really appreciate that, that folks took the time to do that, did so, because we did learn a lot.
Will we plan on doing this on a, annually or again at some point and just for temperature check?
Well, I did receive feedback, interestingly, that, and again, I want to be specific to the request, so I wasn't trying to dodge. We did, we, we did not add, I, I received a couple phone calls and emails about why did you, first off, folks think that children who go to Monty Tech are School Choice. So let me just say that a big, a big misunderstanding was that some kids were being left out on purpose, because of whatever reason. And folks thought that they were, that if you go to, you go to Monty Tech, that you are School Choice. And I had, I did some explaining about that, it's not School Choice, that is, it's vocational school, I went through the whole process. So I think that what I would probably do, I would do two surveys, if I was, she loves surveys, but I would do, probably, I would fulfill the request to do vocational, that's fine. But I'd also send a, a survey out to our School Choice In parents, because with that, you want to understand maybe what you're doing well. Of course you want to know what you're doing well, but you, you want to know, because sometimes you can tell what you're not doing well, because you might think this is why they're coming, but, oh my gosh, this is why they're coming, and that, that can also give us a good indication. So we're, we're planning to do, that's something that I would like to do in the future.
That's great. Next question about surveying School Choice In, because I think you're absolutely correct. We will get a lot of really good feedback to find out why people want to come here, so. Questions or comments? No, thank you for spearheading that.
You're welcome.
All right, so next up, we have the FY '20 program of studies. So, this, the program studies for FY '20 was sent out to all the school committee members, so hopefully everyone had a chance to review it. I would invite Kate and Mandy, they fight, who's going to come down? Just to kind of give us an overview of what our changes are for FY '20, and let's let the community know as well. And then the school committee, if it's so, if we'd like to entertain it, we would need to make a motion to approve it.
So, we've made a few changes. One of the changes is adding the Project Lead the Way courses to the high school program studies. We added the courses we anticipate having, so it might actually carry us through the year after as well. We had added a description of the ACE program, because we did quite a bit of work on that last year and this year. Oh, right, and we added Project Lead the Way to business and the science department. Many high schools have Project Lead the Way in the business department, and we have at this, in this district, a requirement for one business course in your graduation. We've put Project Lead the Way in that department, so that would meet that requirement as well, and it's common for it to be in the business department. But MasCor allows you to use a science, technology, engineering, math STEM course as a lab science, so we really also wanted it to be in the science department, and it's, it says in the program studies that it's in two places. You can't double dip, though, right? So you can't use it as a science and, and as your business requirement. So that's kind of a, a big-ish change. There were some small changes to social studies as a result of the new standards, so the dates of some courses changed. I think there might actually be an entirely new course in social studies as a result of the standards. That's the new one, Global Studies Two. Ms. Vassal knows the program studies very well. We also realigned some of the math courses, so we deleted general algebra and added geometry concepts and deleted general geometry. We had already added algebra concepts last year. I think that's pretty much, there are some CP courses as well that were added, so we're kind of lining things up, considering our students, making sure we have the right levels of courses. There's some additional courses, like history of rock and roll, so there, you know, there's a few additions there. But the big thing, I think, is the, putting the Project Lead the Way both in, in science and in business, that the Project Lead the Way meets the business requirement, it also meets the science requirements, and realigning the social studies based on the history standards. We did a fair bit of the realigning of the math already with the standards.
If I might add, the reason why we did the Project Lead the Way courses in business and technology is because most cases, as Ms. Calley said, that's, it does fall that way for most schools. What we're looking at is our current graduation requirement is that all students have to take business apps. We are proposing that students would have a choice in one of the business courses and that, one of the Project Lead the Way courses could be one of those. In today's society, so many of our students are very tech savvy already, so it might be that business apps isn't really what they need. So it might be more beneficial for them to either take one of the engineering classes or they could potentially take, it's a career prep and financial literacy, because we're hearing a lot about financial literacy now. So we do have that option, and what we're thinking is that some students might prefer to choose that over business apps. So I, the biggest thing I think that we're asking is that we be approved, that that graduation credit is changed, so that students have the option, as long as it's a business and technology option.
So it goes from a requirement for an individual course to a requirement within the department, which I think makes sense.
Capstone?
Oh, yes, ma'am, that's the other thing that we added. We did get approved for the AP Capstone program. And what the AP Capstone program is, is it's a two-part AP program. It's, what's recommended is that students would take the research course first, and then they would take the seminar course second. So it would technically be two different years. We do have some students that are going to be upcoming seniors that may want to take both, just because it would be a good experience for them. And if they'd like to do that, I see no reason why they can't accept that. Through the AP program, they would not get the Capstone designation, because, because I called and checked and said, look, this is our inaugural year, we'd like for students to be able to take both. And the way they explained it is that they really need to have the experience of the full year of the research first, and then the seminar puts into practice. full year of the research first, and then the seminar puts into practice what they learn in the research. So it does make sense to do it that way. They said that some schools actually do the Capstone research portion of it during the sophomore year, in that that supports their junior and senior years with their AP courses.
There was one other thing that I wanted to mention also, was that also, as a result of the history standards changing, we are recommending not to offer history ACE. It's almost impossible to offer history to students in the ACE program, because now the eighth grade curriculum isn't leading into the high school curriculum. It's an entirely different curriculum around civics, which is great, but you can't do like a US One, US Two kind of continuum. But we would retain English and math.
And the provisions to use Mount Wachusett in the seminar.
Yeah, so is that in here?
So we did go ahead and add it in the program of studies on.
That's so new.
We're working with Mount Wachusett with the possibility of doing an MOU. Dr. Cassavat may know a little more about where we are in that process. He's been working with Sarah Fatise at Mount Wachusett. And what we're looking at is offering an English 101 and psychology. And they would be semester courses for us. It would be a three-credit Mount Wachusett, so it would be a dual, a dual credit. Our students would get the credit, it would be here, but it would be Mount Wachusett professors that would be coming here to teach the two courses.
If I, so we actually have a meeting Friday, I believe, at 12:30. So I, we haven't connected, and so we have a lot of questions.
But it's under discussion.
It is. And it's in the program of studies in case that all, we could tie it all in a bow.
And if in fact, we do approve this and additional changes, just bring them to us, because I think one of the things that we struggle with is having enough opportunity for the students to choose different classes. And this will help broaden the spectrum, so.
The other Mount Wachusett course that we were looking at is offering for some of our seniors a fourth-year math that would be the same as a Mount Wachusett, I think it's 096 math class, and it would be taught by one of our teachers, but with support and curriculum from Mount Wachusett. And those students who take that would essentially be getting, you know, strengthening basic skills and be prepared to take the Accuplacer. So students who maybe thought they didn't want to go to school, now they've decided that they want to, now have an opportunity to be able to test into a higher level of math, instead of taking that 096 class, which they'd have to pay for, but don't really get that college credit for it.
That's right.
So this would be a really good opportunity for that group of students. And we've been teaching, so the last two years, we've had the math modeling class, which has been very similar to that class, but not really aligned with the curriculum at Mount Wachusett. So this is really just taking it the next step. Last year, the students that took that class went to Mount Wachusett, they took the Accuplacer. I think we had seventeen or eighteen students that took the Accuplacer, and they all passed at both. So I thought that was pretty good statistics for our students.
Other questions?
So it looks, as far as what was written in the program, that the ACE program has changed a bit since what was delivered originally to parents and students. My son was one of those students who was in. So is, is, is it going to be announced to parents, you know, of the changes, or are parents going to just kind of see it and then handle it, hope that they see the changes?
I know that we had, I prepared a one-page summary for parents that Mrs. Lefreniere used when she had some sort of a parent night last week. It's going to be in the program studies. I can't speak so much to the history not having been here, but when I came on board, we had the ACE program, but very undefined criteria for entering and limited criteria for entering. And the other part of it was that it was implemented in a way that students were accepted into ACE at the end of seventh grade and leapfrogged over eighth grade without consideration for any of the standards that they had missed. So when you skip an entire year, you have to somehow come up with a plan for how you're going to include those standards, because eighth grade is an important year, and we're learning important things in eighth grade that we were entirely missing out on. So we tightened up, added some objective criteria, and came up with a plan for how to not skip over standards, to make sure they're included in the continuum that students receive. So there, you know, those were the changes, not necessarily in the outcome of the program, but in the structure. This year, though, it is new and really unavoidable not to offer the history.
So I'm just, because our kids would say in that first year, I don't know if it ever was really talked about or formulated, because there were so many unknowns when the kids started in that year. But I think one of the things that was talked about in really very general terms and not specific was recognition for kids who went through the program. What would it look like? How would it look like? What would the standards? And I don't even know if you have had the opportunity to even consider that, knowing that really it's your juniors that are the first class for next year, that'll be heading into their senior year with this ACE designation. I know that some of the seniors were, you know, went to some, but it wasn't as full-blown as the juniors. It was, it was an odd transition year for that first year, but I know there were still some seniors. So I think that's probably more my, my question, and I think.
Well, I think they, the way that it presented really was that it was, it was going to be, I think one of the selling points was that it was going to save us money for them to be able to take college classes as seniors and not have to pay for it, because they were going to begin college classes.
So that, so.
However. Then, after I found out, only because being on school committee and talking to administration, then I found out that, as you said, that it was just kind of, it was, it was brought out too prematurely, and there was really no, no basis for anything that was, that was, that was presented.
And that wasn't this current administrator.
It was not, no. And, and, and then that administrator left. So unfortunately, we were all kind of hand and bill goods, and there was nothing to hold it up, so.
Well, not yet, though, not yet.
That's why I'm kind of wondering how this is going to.
That's what I want to say. The MOU with the Mount does, in fact, meet the, meet the, I'm going to call it the expectation of those folks who were in that, in that class. So if you look at the original, and I still have the original PowerPoint, you know, there's probably an excess amount of classes that were to be offered, and there were two. And it didn't specify, it just said college classes, et cetera. I'd have to go back to say exactly that. I would say about, about how folks are going to be recognized about that, if you stay to the letter of the law, and this is what the guidance folks are going to have to, going to have to tease out, is that the one thing it did have was a pretty clear criteria of what you had to take and what you couldn't take if you're going to be an ACE student through high school. Okay? We're going to have to figure out who stayed the track and who didn't stay the track, whatever that means.
And that's what I've tried to ask, but I haven't had a chance to get an answer.
Well, the answer is that we, you'd be surprised to say that very few, very few kids stayed the track.
And when I asked my son if he's still on track, he says, yeah, but I don't know, because I don't know that they know if he's on track, because I don't know if anybody really knows what that track is.
I don't know that there was a lot of structure beyond the concept, right? And so what we're trying to do is put some structure behind the concept. I think we are meeting our obligation to these students, ACE is accelerated college experience, right? So there are a number of ways that they're getting an accelerated college experience, including by taking high school courses early. It opens up opportunities for them within the high school. The MOU with the Mount would be one, but I would say also the AP courses count in that as well, right? So students who, all students have access to AP courses, but perhaps ACE students have a little more room in their schedule to take those, and then those count for college credit if you achieve a passing score. So there are a couple of ways that we're doing that, but I think we're, we're trying to put the, the structure to the concept.
We're trying to build the airplane.
So we look forward to hearing what they come up with and looking at that original track and if it even makes sense, so.
And I think this particular program studies gives kids more options.
It definitely does.
And choices which we haven't had.
And I have to say, Mrs. Vassal did a lot of work on this program studies. We met a number of times, and I just want to thank her for the work that she did, because there were, you know, quite a few changes, some minor and a couple more substantial, but. Thank you.
I think it's in pretty good shape, though.
I do, too.
I think that it's in good shape. We do have a, a couple of things have since come up, as far as just changing, like some of the beginning and clarifying some information, which will, will certainly, you know, bring to your attention. It's not changing any courses or anything, but just clarifying a couple of things, so that it's more clear that when parents read it with their, with their children, it's easier to understand what's offered here at the high school.
All right. I have no more questions or comments. I would entertain a motion to approve the program of studies for FY-20 as presented. I have a motion. Do I have a second? And I have a second. Any other questions, comments, or discussions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye opposed? Abstained, passes unanimously. Thank you very much for all the hard work putting this together. And as we indicated earlier, if there are further changes, especially as you begin to work with the Mount that you need to bring forward, you know, just let us know, and we can entertain whatever those changes are. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our subcommittee reports. We'll start.
I think the academic comes through in our meetings. It's basically what we work on.
Great. Finance, I think we've done finance to the hilt already, so we'll, facilities, have we had a facilities meeting? I know we've been busy with the individual elementary schools, but are facilities?
Nope.
Okay. Yes. Okay, policy. Mrs. Gojol is not here tonight. Are you happy to meet him? Would you like to raise? Okay.
I guess I will, with my stuffy nose, so, so don't mind me. We have some policies that we're bringing forth for second reading and then implementation upon approval, and those policies would be IB. It's a proposed update to the academic freedom policy, and it really just changes the reference where it's at state, now it's as Commonwealth. IHAI, which is proposed update for occupational education, updates the policy to include pre-K as part of the policy. IHAMA, proposed new, this is parental notification relative to sex education. This is new policy recommended by MAS C. It sets the policy for notification to parents. IHB, proposed update, special instructional programs and accommodations, programs for children with special needs. This updates the policy to be more comprehensive for programs with, for children with special needs. IHBF is a proposed update for home down instruction, and it updates the policy to only include a policy statement on home down instruction, it removes all of the procedural information that's contained in the administration's manual on home down instruction. JJJ, proposed for deletion, extracurricular activity eligibility. Actually, I apologize, not proposed deletion, proposed for update, so that's a typo there. We're keeping just a part of what the old statement said, as far as the eligibility for our extracurricular program. JP, proposed new student gifts and solicitations. It sets policy for student gifts and solicitations. So I would entertain a motion to approve the second reading and then implementation of these policies.
I'm sorry, what did you, you want to? I would entertain a motion. I have a motion. Do I have a second? And I have a second. Any questions or comments on these changes? Seeing none, all in favor? Oops, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was looking at the JJJ.
Yep.
It's administrative policy, but it's also in the student handbook.
Yes, there are things, and I'm just going to pull it up, because with the error where it's a deletion, it's actually, as I said, an update. A second, I will show you. Bear with me a second.
It's just on you.
Yeah.
Just noting that it's in the student handbook as well.
Yep. Just go find here, JJJ. It's really just a, a one sentence that talks about that children who are not enrolled in Narragansett Regional School District are not eligible to participate in school programs or extracurricular activities sponsored by the district, with the exception of homeschool children. So it just states our policy there, and it is in the, that is stated in the student handbook as well, so yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you brought that up. So I had a motion, and I had a second. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye opposed? Abstained? Unanimous? We have a group of policies that we have first readings on. Those policies are. IHBJ, which is proposed update for homeschooling, and this updates the policy to include only a policy statement and some legal references, and it removes a lot of the procedural information. In conjunction with that, IHBG-R is the homeschooling regulation policy, and that includes more references to legal and oversight of the homeschooling program. So some of the things that used to be in IHBG ended up moving to IHBGR. IHBH is a new policy for alternative school programs, and it just sets the district policy on the use of alternative school programs. IHCA is proposed update to summer school. We update the policy, which expands district guidelines for summer school programs. IHD, we're proposing for deletion. This is adult community education. We don't offer these programs, so we don't need to have the policy at this time. If we chose at some point, we could certainly put a policy together. IJ is a proposed update for instructional materials, and it updates the policy, just the more current wording. IJI is proposed deletion, textbook selection and adoption. This was mostly procedural, and any policy-related statements are already included in policy IJ instructional material. And the same can be said for IJJ, which is supplementary material selection. Again, it was mostly procedural, and all policy-related items and statements are included in IJ instructional materials. So those are the policies for first reading. I would entertain a motion to move these through the first reading process. I have a motion and a second.
Second.
And I have a second. Any questions, comments, or discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Aye opposed? Abstained, passes unanimously. All right. We have long-term planning. The Templeton Elementary School Building Committee.
I'm very well. A lot of trades are on site, they're getting ready with the exterior work, and it's probably going to be a landscape, and I think it's got to be right next month. We've only used like ten percent of our contingency, which I think shows how well projects do.
Great. It's great. We'd love to see when we get the school committee in for a tour, if you guys let us know, we can get something scheduled.
We'll see what we can do.
Yeah.
And maybe your chief doctor has a.
No.
Sorry, I didn't alert, oh.
Well, I look forward to, because the next exciting thing is going to be your plan to have everybody be able to come through and see it, so.
Yeah, we'll get, they'll be next. They'll take your shoes off, though, at the door. Like. Walking in my grandmother's house. Can't wear your shoes. Walking in the room, it's not, can't wear your shoes.
At our last subcommittee, the Phillipsburg Memorial Elementary School Building Committee, another meeting, and they've been reviewing.
Yeah, we had one last night, and they're just gathering some final processes, and if we have a meeting in two weeks, that we're putting together an article for the town meeting warrant.
All right, we have no correspondence to review. Our next meeting is Wednesday, April 24th, 6:00 p.m. here in Akiva. And unless anyone has anything else they'd like to discuss, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I thank you, everyone. We adjourned.